Good evening and welcome to the October 10th, 2023 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council. If the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Light system, three minutes. On the podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made up part of the record. The City Code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or organization. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Rabbi David with Rhodev Shalom Temple will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Ely will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you. Rabbi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to admit that as I stand here this evening, preparing to invoke words of blessing and hopefully inspiration, I find myself resonating with the words of the great medieval Jewish poet and philosopher Yehuda Halevi, who lived in Spain several centuries before they discovered there was more than water beyond their shores. He said, "My heart is in the east and I am the farthest end of the west, but the welcome and the embrace of this community makes me feel less distant from my brethren in Israel and very much at home in your midst." It is a true blessing to live in a community with a strong moral compass. And so, on behalf of all who are gathered here today, I will express our collective appreciation for our many and abundant blessings. We are thankful for life itself, for the health we enjoy, which allows us to fulfill our callings. We are grateful for the abundance in the world which sustains us daily and deeply appreciate the friendships which support us and the camaraderie of community which elevates us all. We recognize our good fortune to have the ability to be involved in useful work and do so for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities on behalf of our fellow citizens so that we all thrive within the freedoms we share. Scripture teaches us that as citizens, we ought to obey the governing authorities as they promote peace, order, and justice for all residents in our community. And so, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and for this assembled council. May each of you be blessed to reflect the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times as reflected in the agenda set before you today, an understanding of the true needs of our community and how best to provide for the welfare of those who live and work in and around our beloved city. May you have a keen thirst for pursuing justness and rightness so that you aspire always to do what is good and fitting. May you have the ability to work together in harmony, especially when there is honest disagreement. And may you be blessed to enjoy personal peace in your lives, joy in your tasks, and a true sense of fulfillment in your work. Amen.
And before we do the pledge, Rabbi, for you to come on this week, we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Woodbury from this meeting?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Presentation. Tonight, we have a presentation of a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. At this time, I'd like to ask Fire Chief Wesley Rogers, Chief Fire Marshal Jeff Center, EMS Chief Tom Bribril, Public Safety Public Education Coordinator Lisa King, and Personnel from Newport News Fire Station One to join me at the podium. So while everyone's walking up, I'm really excited to read this proclamation. I actually think I'm taking the firefighter's test. Was it the six-minute test? Ten minutes. It increased from six to 10 minutes, but I think I'll be taking the firefighter tests in like two months. So let me train for it, and then I'll be out there walking with the rest of everybody else. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Newport News is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all individuals living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk of fire, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 166,000 annually between 2016 and 2020, and whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unintended cooking, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape route and have working smoke alarms are more prepared and therefore more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Newport News residents should make sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas should a home catch fire, residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things, and whereas the city of Newport News's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind all of us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the city of Newport News, hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week and encourage citizens of the city of Newport News to use safe cooking practices and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Newport News Fire Department." That's all I got. So now, my notes say, show everyone proclamation. I'm just the fire chief. Hopefully, you guys take it easy on me in a few weeks, alright? Yeah, thank you. Public hearings, page three. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to implement a Port Host Communities Fund Grant for 2295 Harbor Road. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 27, Minutes of the Work Session of September 26, 2023. Page 118, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of September 26, 2023. Page 137, A Special Resolution Changing the Location of the Regular Council Meeting of December 12, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items F1 through F3, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Other City Council Actions, page 140. Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for cost sharing by and between the Hampton Roads Sanitation District, otherwise known as HRSD, and the city of Newport News, Virginia, for city improvements related to HRSD trail construction at Riverview Farm Park. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Page 156, Appropriations. Item H, Mr. Manager.
We have three appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $30,000 from the Newport News Sheriff's State Criminal Alien Assistance Program Funds for correctional purposes. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $691,659 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development Port Host Communities Revitalization Fund Grant and required local match for modernization and facility upgrades at 2295 Harbor Road, formerly known as the Train Station Restaurant. The third appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $7,693,681 of fiscal year 2022 state revenue and fiscal year 2023 state revenue carryover funds and city revenue for various school capital projects. I recommend approval of all appropriations.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve Items H1 through H3, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Item I, Citizen Comments on Matters That Are Germane to City Council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Once again, we're using our three-minute lights. Please pay attention to the lights. Thank you. We have Chantaz Cook and Sian's Cook. Is that one at a time or separately? Okay, that's fine. Chantaz Cook.
On 10:04, me and my sisters were attacked by four adults and two children. And before we were even able to make it to the bus stop, um, I was jumped by all of them, and my sister was, had her hands scarred from being pushed on the ground by one adult.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
One question. I'm sorry, where did this happen?
My sisters were attacked by like four adults.
You said where it happened?
Oh, 1216 Hampton Avenue.
Okay.
Sian's Cook? Ah, yeah, I don't think that one works. Just try to, yeah, hit that small. Just put it down. You got it. There you go.
Public speaker. Speak loud, speak clear, public speaker.
What was that? So we got out of home, and we was walking to the bus stop. Um, four adults, four adults started beating us, and then when we got out the house, they walked up on me. And the little girl started beating me, and then my sister tried to break it up, but she got pushed on the ground and now her hand hurt. And my brother tried to break it up, and he got, he got hit.
In the city of Newport News at the bus stop?
In the city of Newport News at the bus stop.
How old are you?
I'm nine.
What school are you at, 10?
Sedfield Elementary.
Did the incident happen before the fight?
Yes.
What happened?
We was on the bus. The little girl kept touching me. I told her to please stop. She kept touching me, and I told her to please stop. And then I got up, then we both got up, and then we both started fighting.
Did the bus driver report it?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Yo' agent Uwa? Sorry if I said your name wrong again.
It's alright. Um, it's no way you can actually prepare to say whatever, you know, I have to say about speaking on this incident that occurred on October 4th at the bus stop with the children. Um, and the measures that I had to take to go get justice, these adults have not been arrested. The police was called. They were not arrested. The school bus driver did not report the incident. The school's not handling the situation properly as they should. A young man came and knocked on my door and had my children come outside. He's not being disciplined, so he'll probably think that it's okay, and he can do it again. Um, when I went to go file charges with the magistrate, magistrate Black shredded my papers up. I had six forms already filled out, and she so carelessly and insensitively just shredded the forms up on Friday. Because of all this stressing thing, me and my children were not able to make our family pile well down in North Carolina. A lot of things has been going on. There's been no peace whatsoever. Um, along with this situation happening, today, it was an incident at the school, and this is what Sian's had wrote at school. This is her teacher, and she's saying that she's gonna kill her teacher. Now, she's gonna have to do a threat assessment of something new that they got going on now. And this is my thing. Her teacher has been harassing her for quite some time now. And when I was gonna go address the situation, this other situation occurred. So I have not had the time to go talk to the teacher. But today, the teacher had took some lip gloss from her and so that she couldn't have it, which is not true. You could have the lip gloss, but the teacher had taken it away from her. When she did this, I think she did this out of anger and out of upsetness. But what I will say is that for a child to be in your classroom, nine years old, to be attacked by four adults, the teacher never once asked her, "How you doing? Are you okay?" To try to at least stay on the same page with her if you're gonna be teaching her. You know, instead, she harasses her this week, and now we at a situation where the child has wrote she's going to kill, well, kill Ms. Jones. And I'm afraid that now a book is gonna be thrown at her because like the situation that happened because of the situation that occurred at Richneck Elementary. And, um, my name is Yo' Agent Uwa. I stay on Hampton Avenue. My email address is cheatripe8@gmail.com. I'd rather speak on the CPS issues that I have going on right now, but I can't. I can't speak on it because it's another matter right now. Um, if the children aren't protected and don't feel safe in Newport News, Virginia, we're gonna continue having this uprising, numbers of youth and the shootings and everything. The children have to be taken care of. Their needs need to be met. And the people in charge of these positions of keeping these children safe, happy, and healthy are falling, and they are missing a lot of cracks, and things are, it just needs to be better. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. And we'll talk to the, I'll talk to Chief Police after this. Okay? Thank you. Clarence Whitley.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmen and Women. My name is Clarence Whitley. I live at 403 Missfeld Road South, Newport News, Virginia. And I'm here again to speak on a Confederate monument that was at Warwick. That, if you look around at the communities around us, from Lawrenceville to Matthews to Norfolk, Virginia Beach, even Hampton, they have either taken down their monuments and re- and erected them or they have modified them. I do not agree with any of the modifications, but it's owned by the church, and the church modified it in Hampton, and there's nothing that could be done about it. But in Virginia Beach, they've authorized that the monument be re-erected. They're helping to pay for it. In Norfolk, they took it down from MacArthur Center and put it in a cemetery, taking two blank sections of the monument out, but they re-erected it. In Allen White, the town council, the county council, Board of Supervisors voted to have it moved 15 miles down the road on a private property, and the county paid for removing it, re-erecting it. And, uh, then in Lawrenceville, the county moved it off of public property into the cemetery. In Franklin, the town of Franklin moved it from the park into a cemetery. But at least they are honoring these men that went to war not for anything other than that their Commonwealth, where we live today, asked them to serve and protect their communities. Virginia did not ask for the war of aggression. Lincoln marched through Virginia into Manassas, where the first battle was fought. Our people was there to stop them coming through Virginia. Did a fine job. If they had really wanted to, they could have marched into Washington and stopped. When they chased the people out of Virginia, suited the Confederacy stopped. That war kept going on and on and on. You say, people say that that war was fought for slavery, for the abolitionists. It was. For slave people, it was. For 10% of the Southern Nation, it was. But 1% of that Confederate Nation was black and also owned slaves. So I'm just asking that you put the monument back up at one of the locations I have been asking most for. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Angela Harris.
I gotta laugh to keep from crying. Because as we talk about this mulatto story that my brother was telling, everybody is important. So I guess when you called out the young man that marched in Newport News, I'll be the one that marched in Norfolk, Mayor Fram, take it down. I'm Angela Harris, and I'm born and raised in Newport News. And my problem with even what you were saying and what's going on with our children, if you just claim me, claim me. I'm your cousin. So as we talk about this 1958 merger between Newport News, Warwick County, and Hampton, claim us. That's it. And we can stop talking about critical race thinking. We can know why we tore down Huntington High School. We'll know why we tore down Phoenix High School. We'll know why Carver don't exist. And we'll know why we only have Newport News High School with the military backing it and stuff like that. So I tried to tell you the last time, let's communicate. But I guess you didn't hear the children, the sister crying for her children, the fact that we in a situation, the fact that we have a young mayor that's 33 with an open-door policy, the fact that somebody been lying, our city manager been fired. Like, it's a lot going on. And it's not just happening right now. It's been happening ever since Chuck Allen was sitting up there. And so, we thought we was moving in peace. And I came here tonight to see Woodbury again. And I'm so, so sad of what's going on in Israel, but you gotta claim your people, and you gotta tell the truth. You gotta do that stuff. And I'm here tonight, Mr. Jones, because we need five minutes and not three. If your council members before you was out of line and out of order and not citizen participation, and they took our five minutes away and gave us three, to the point like, see this? Ruled in disrespect. You 33. I love my council. You have to know who you are. You have to be yourself. All in actual, you know where we at. And you know, we worked on the Dutch downlaws. You know, my family, my Thomas family built the first house of prayer for all people. You know that stuff. And you know, miss your- And you know, Miss Shaw's statue is coming to just Jefferson Avenue, we all know that Lightfoot Solomon Miss Shaw was an advisor to three presidents, um, I'm gonna call you by your nickname, but Mr. Harris, please go see the Top Water, uh, Genealogy Society up there at the Warwick County Historical Society, 'cause some people playing, we love each other and brother, if you did not know, you have, what, two Confederate monuments over at the Green Lawn Cemetery. And the significance of the Green Lawn Cemetery, when College B Huntington came to Newport News and bought his coal from West Virginia and put him on that cemetery at DTA, they uplifted my people, those they wanted to uplift, and they put them in that Green Lawn Cemetery. So if you wanna see your Confederate monument, brother, go to the Green Lawn Cemetery and claim your black family and your days will be better.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Take care of our children though.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
Email her, right, 'cause she gave everybody her email the last time we could see it and no one has communicated with her. So I'm gonna need y'all to act like Joe Frank up in here, you know, claim all your people 'cause Joe know the whole story. Not to have the story, reclaim your people. God bless Israel right now, all our Hebrew Israelite cousins, I love y'all, take care of each other, hold it down, we need to have a conversation. Hey, brother, Green Lawn Cemetery, you already have two, how many more you need?
Thank you, ma'am. Troy Catchmore.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Men, City Councilmen and Women, uh, my name is Troy Catchmore, uh, Director of Programs for Catch More Kids. We're about to, uh, launch our campaign, Stop Shooting Campaign. And, uh, as I walked up here, I saw signs of, uh, individuals running for office, so in this campaign, we brought signs for each one of y'all to put in your lo- line, it only says Stop Shooting, both sides. And anybody in the, uh, City of Newport News, have them wherever, feel free to contact us if you want signs and support this Stop Shooting message, because that's the only way we're gonna stop shooting, if everybody get, come out your house and get on board. So I would like to leave these with the gentleman for each one of you. And I also, we hear a lot about black-on-black crime, well, November twenty-fifth is our third annual Black Excellence Gala. And what we're doing is we're highlighting local people, uh, the common person, people that get out there and do the work with us, that don't necessarily have an organization or get recognized like Catch More Kids, we're highlighting them and they're getting their awards. So we have in- invites for each one of you to come out and see these people, get to meet these people, you know, uh, uh, someone once asked, you know, that they don't know all the individual players, well, a lot of them will be there, the boots on the ground, so I brought invites for each and every one of y'all. Yes.
Thank you.
So thank you, anybody want signs, uh, catchmorekids.org, uh, our web, website will be updated in the next few days where you know where you can pick them up and what time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is new business. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have, uh, any new business to report this evening, thank you.
City Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out to members of the audience, um, for next meeting, that while photography is permitted from the side aisles, once the meeting is in session, flash photography is not permitted.
Just a, just a matter of question, um, has there been five minutes for discourse before in the past?
Um, it has not been in a number of years, but it used to be.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk.
I'd like to, uh, send a happy birthday wish to our Director of Communications, Ms. Cleeter Jones, her birthday's today, as well as our acting city manager, Mr. Alan Archer, whose birthday will be on Saturday.
Happy birthday, Alan. I'll make sure to call you super early on Saturday. Councilman Ely.
Uh, I'd just like to thank everybody who presented to us earlier today at the work session, also like to thank everybody who came out today to speak with us, we definitely heard you and I'd like to commend the kids, y'all did a great job with speaking loud and clear, so keep up the good work, um, look to see what you're gonna become in the future. Also, I'd like to, um, dedicate this city council meeting to my grandmother, um, hopefully that my family's at home watching this meeting, um, she was my rock, she held me down for a long time, so I'd like to dedicate this council meeting to her. Also, I'd like to let everybody know on October the twenty-seventh, I partner with Brooks Crossing, Virginia Peninsula Community College, as well as West Next Organi- Organization, we'll be having a career fair at the Hampton Roads Convention Center, uh, we'll, we'll be opening high school skits from ten to twelve and then open to the general public from one to three. We have over fifty different, um, companies throughout the Hampton Roads area that will be a part as well as hiring on the spot. So if you know anybody that's looking for a job or looking for a career change, please come out October the twenty-seventh at the Hampton Roads Convention Center, thank you, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Uh, and thanks to everyone who's here on tonight and, uh, just have one special recognition I want to share, I had the opportunity to speak with this, uh, the leader of this group and, uh, I wanted to bring to the city's attention of the remarkable efforts and achievements of a dedicate, dedicated group of young people that accomplished something special during the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school athletic season and that is the two thousand and twenty-three Mitchfield Varsity Boys Basketball Team. Uh, they haven't received a lot of attention as they didn't win the state championship like Woodside had, had this past year, but the team's commitment, hard work and dedication have consistently gone above and beyond expectations, they have consistently demonstrated exceptional performance, creativity and po- problem-solving skills, contributing significantly to their successes on and off the court and that's why I wanted to highlight a couple young men that were part of this program, uh, Etienne Struthers, uh, he was a two-time All-State, two-time All-Region, two-time All-Tide Water graduate with honors and received a full athletic scholarship to Appalachian State, uh, A.J. Clark, another one received a full athletic scholarship to VMI, uh, Eric Turner, a graduate with honors that is attending Shaw University, Darian Parker is attending Shaw University, Sincere Williams is attending Shaw University and Devin Keese, Shenandoah University. And, uh, the person that I had the opportunity to speak with and meet with was Coach Lamont Struthers, who was the Peninsula District Coach of the Year. And the reason why I'm formally recognizing and celebrating this group of young men, uh, they've been doing great things on the court and in the community, they did go twenty-two and oh in a tough Peninsula District, uh, which the only loss of the season was to the state champions in the tournament, which was Woodside, two Newport News schools, um, they were the second team ever in history to accomplish an undefeated season in the historic Peninsula District. So please, let's make sure we recognize this group, like we did some of our, you know, we're the city of champions here in Newport News, they fell a little short of being champions as far as receiving a trophy, but I do wanna recognize these young men for the great things that they've done in the classroom, uh, translated to the court and they still represent Newport News just like Woodside did and congratulations to them and, uh, hopefully they'll have another good season this year and that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Councilman Long.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for everyone to come out to, um, participate in the, um, public session for the city council. I wanna recognize our Newport News Water Works, uh, they recently won first place in the category of most elegant solution, second place overall and twenty-five hundred dollars in, in the International Twenty Twenty-three Intelligent Water System Challenge held during the Water Environment Federation Technical Ex- Exhibition and Conference in Chicago this past week. Uh, our Newport News Water Work team led by Chris Bafford, Bassford demonstrated how the adoption of intelligent water systems can help utilize use data for better decision-making. Other team members include Mike Lawson, Sherri Williams from Newport New Water Works and Don Hudson from Marathon Council Consulting. Um, also want to, um, let the public know that Newport News was recently selected to, to participate in the inaugural Public Private Partnership P-three Council. Uh, the mission of P-three Council is to share critical knowledge, best practices and innovative and impactful solutions for cities' public-private partnerships. That's, uh, all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick.
Uh, yes, I, I'll only have a few things, I do wanna take this opportunity, we were able to, um, participate in the Virginia Municipal League Conference in Norfolk and I just wanna thank Mayor Kenny Alexander and his entire council for hosting at, in our city of Norfolk, they did a wonderful job at the Chrysler Museum, um, with the, the exhibit and also with, uh, refreshments and, and music. But, um, the importance of the Virginia Municipal League is an advocacy group that consists of all cities, towns and counties and we have representation there because we advocate for local issues, um, to help our communities, particularly because even though we share, um, our separate cities and towns in the state of Virginia, it's always great for us to come together to share best practices, um, so I wanna thank them for that and that occurred October eighth through the tenth. And while Ms. Dorothy Murray is out there in the audience, I, I have to say that she is a part of the Hampton Chapter of the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Club and they will be having their breakfast celebrating Founder's Day this coming Saturday in Hampton at the Hyatt, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Nothing, sir.
Then I will, uh, I'll wrap up. Um, so I think everyone knows what's, what's happening in Israel, what most people don't know is I actually had, um, the opportunity to visit Israel this past July, uh, there was a few local leaders that were invited on a, a fact-finding mission, an education seminar. Um, we had the opportunity for a few days, we visited Ramallah, uh, which in the West Bank, we visited a local kibbutz, which was on the border of Gaza. Uh, a Jewish kibbutz is like a community, it's a commune, they live together, uh, the kids run around, uh, they eat at the same, uh, location. Uh, a few days ago, it came out that the kibbutz, Kfar Azar, was actually part, uh, they were mostly massacred, uh, this, this past week. Um, locally, um, if you want to join in solidarity, there's going to be a rally for Israel, prayer and song, being held tomorrow at five-thirty PM at the United Jewish Community of the Virginia Peninsula located at four oh-one City Center Boulevard. Uh, to make sure that we know who's coming, it's requested that you, if you do wanna come, please register, uh, on their, on their website. Um, one of the most impactful days during my time in Israel, uh, was we got the opportunity, uh, to pray, uh, at the Wailing Wall. Uh, the Wailing Wall is, you know, all fates, uh, come together, different parts, uh, and my, my prayer that day was for peace. It was for peace, uh, not only in Newport News, uh, but also in our country, um, but across Israel and the Middle East and so my prayer continues on this day, uh, for peace. Um, and with that, we stand adjourned, thank you.